Okay, we're gonna call meeting order, it's after six o'clock. We'll call, we've got everybody except Gretchen, who I understand is not going to be here tonight.
Um, no, she will be here, she was at the same meeting I was at before I came here, so just to be a little late.
And I understand there are more additions to the agenda?
Uh-huh.
I would intend a motion without the agenda. Motion again, sorry, we have a second to talk, we'll refer to discussion. Hearing now all those in favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Uh, moving on to approve or correct the minutes of the October ninth, two thousand and twelve regular meeting.
Like motion approved minutes?
Motion by Dave for proof, second, blue, refer to discussion. Hearing now all those in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Onto the financial reports, we get September Treasury reports and month balance. Anything you'd like to point out about?
No, um, there's, I think the only one that came up is a negative, there was an eighty dollar one, but that was, um, explained pretty easily as far as it was just a, went over budget just a little bit. The other one is the work this time, and we talked about that before, where we're gonna go in the hole on that particular budget, tell it, divide it up and put it in the right accounts.
Call back to motion approved by Ashes. Okay, motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Mark, refer to discussion. Hearing now all those in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. And we have September additional bills and October bills.
Yes, I had the opportunity to go into the district office this afternoon and review the bills, and I did not see anything out of the morning. So I didn't have a foundation to prove the bill, rather than Gretchen.
Who? Motion by Lou. Second by Mark, any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Uh, we have no items under consent agenda, so we move on to business. Number one, information on Healthy Hunter Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten. We have.
Who we got here?
By my name, and, uh, new guidelines that we have for the, uh, nutrition, or the nutrition, uh, sodium and all that stuff that's on there. We're trying to work that the best we can. Um, our kids are doing fairly good, I think, but we've had some complaints with size and all these stuff like that. Um, we've had to limit ketchup and pickles and stuff, that's the sodium, that's, the sodium target isn't there yet where it's supposed to be. I mean, next year's when it's really gonna take effect, and so we're trying to cut down the rate because sodium is really high in our, in our neighbors. And so we're working on kind of putting that down. Um, we've had some problems with the students, like with ketchup packets we've done with them, and they've been allergic from the sodium, that they're putting them under toilet seats, squishing them down, we had trouble with the apples in the toilets. Um, what else was there to be done about on that? Um, smash and we hit the wall, I guess we had any problems where they were, um, they blocked the toilets with the apples and stuff. It's just, they're just rebelling, they're just not real happy. Now with the ketchup, you know, we get them in packets, you know, if they start doing that, it's gonna really be a mess. And we hate to discontinue all of that stuff, but everything will be in packets because we have to keep track of calorie count now. They can only have so many calories, so they can't help themselves with all the ketchup and mustard, with the hard stuff they want, because we're not gonna meet the guidelines that we have to keep. So that's why now we give out packets. And they can purchase, we tried it, that they can purchase an extra packet of ketchup or an extra packet of dressing. And, um, another day we, it was last week, Monday I think it was, we did that, and we had sixty extra ketchup packets go out with our account that we have, and the cashers, there was seven of them, right? Seven of them that were actually.
Charged out.
Charged out.
They've got them.
Put them underneath their trays.
And they're costing us a quarter piece. So I mean, it gets cost us.
So we've limited to one, one ketchup packet, and that is like three, three of those, like, ones that you get, like, with gum and rolls and stuff like that, and the little foil shins ones, that container has three of those packets in it.
They're not happy with the size of the bun. Our buns are a little smaller, aren't much the same size, it's just that our buns, because we have to limit the bread, and we're a limitation as to how much bread these kids can have. So, now, I don't know. I, we did take some pictures, they say, they say they're not getting enough food. And the idea of this, with this thing is they want them to take more fruits and vegetables. And if they don't take the fruits and vegetables, they just take the hamburger. Now, we've got pictures that we took of our trays, this is at the high school and middle school level. Yeah, picture please? So you've got some idea, we took them the last couple days, and that's what, if they take fruits and vegetables, that's what they're taking, that's what our tray look like.
I don't, I can only speak for myself, but I, and I have heard complaints, but I never once thought it was you guys' fault. I mean, we have to, I, when I read, I thought for a long time daycare thing, kitchen, we're all in the same food program, so we had similar guidelines, but you guys' are even tougher than ours. Like, when, when I read that you can't have sliced bread, you can have a bun, but you can't have bread, that's just what, I don't know.
If you have the hamburger, if you have the hamburger bun, that's the limit on the bread for the day.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's.
And rice is considered.
I'm just saying hopefully, because I can't believe that they're gonna stick to this thing, because I understand the intent is really good, they're trying, but it's, uh, try to make a law, one size fits all, and you can't do that. There's kids that are, uh.
And I, and I disagree with the way the state is doing it, and.
It's not just the state, it's federal.
And you need the way they're doing it where the kids can buy an extra item, I disagree with that, but, and I talked to them about it.
Your purpose is truly, you know, to cut down.
So if you've got, yes, if you've got money, you can buy an extra two, three, you can buy what you want. So I mean, I think, I think it's ridiculous, and I talked to them about it, and they go, well, that's the rules, you know? If you want another one, you pay for it, and, and again, so if you've got money, you can go be.
There are people that have bills and are being put together that are trying to get this re, uh.
It makes no sense.
Redone.
So the big thing that they want to cut back on, sodium and bread?
Calories.
It's calories overall, and sodium.
Stay away from all of your, um, french fries and trans fats, and both stay away from, uh, mashed potatoes, anything, anything, potato cots.
What is, are there schools that they experiencing the same kind of thing?
I don't know if anybody saw this thing called paper on Sunday.
Yeah, throwing apples and squishing ketchup packets, as bad as it sounds, it's kind of mild to some of the things that some of the schools are experiencing with their kids rebelling against this stuff.
Do you guys have different serving sizes for elementary, middle school, or?
Different calories, yes, we have different calories for the elementary, and I have a different, uh, that I use for six through eight over here, and nine through twelve.
See, most of the complaints from the high schools?
Yeah, I would say, I would say.
I haven't had many in elementary, so. There's quite a bit of food on the road, it gets quite something to say. I was gonna say, at the elementary, they usually, there's a lot of that, they don't eat all the food anyway, I, they wait till they get home.
So I don't know what the answer is, we're, we're trying, we have to get compliance, if we're not compliant, they will not fond us, spirit's forth, and they're gonna be watching, we have to stay compliant, so.
Mess of there needs to be somewhere.
It's, it's a federal mandate, there are no options right now, and they, they follow it in.
And just keep telling them that.
Just for the food service people, they had to present quite a few plans just to the federal government, just in order to get qualified to be in compliance, so they are, it is something that they are checking on.
And then I think it's really important to make sure that it's not, that they realize it's not just state, it is federal. So that's even, it's more hoops you gotta jump through, because when you've got more than one ringmaster, you.
Is there any way that we could get that information to the kids, that it isn't, you know, I mean, they're.
That it isn't too nasty, right?
Yeah.
Some kid come and told us, it's all your fault, you, you just wanna do this, and we're like, no, we don't wanna do it.
You know, a lot of, I, I have to say though, um, parents are the ones that need to be educated too, because. In the press, maybe, like.
It wasn't hard at all.
We did a story before the senior started.
And, and they have made, and I don't know how to get the teachers to.
Well, don't you have a homeroom?
Because.
Yeah, there is a homeroom. So we, we could do some presentations, um.
Yeah.
The, part of, part of the problem with sending things home is that with the older kids, at least my experience has been that it doesn't always get to where it needs to be.
Trash part of it, yeah.
Um, it's, it's tossed very quickly, but certainly, I think, you know, I, I could certainly address it in another article, um, probably after November sixth. But, um, I could certainly write something up also that I could put in paper about it. We could certainly have our advisory teachers talk about it too, so I'll talk to Lori about that.
We've gone had the students in this room last week, that was brought up and talked about, and you made it very clear that it was not us doing it. And answered some questions.
Yeah, and I think I hit that just thought, and every, every group nine through twelve had some concerns and issues about, uh, the way it is right now.
We'll try to get you out with the.
What's happened, you just tell the kids that, I mean, contact your representatives or whoever, and, I mean, I don't know.
That's all you can do at this point, is it's federal legislation, you gotta contact your federal representatives. I mean, and it's every state that's dealing with it.
Right.
You're the person on the front line, so you get.
Anything else? That's, well, thanks for coming and sharing that with us.
And thanks for the pictures. You know, we choose.
Not the least.
Okay, um, we're gonna move number two, uh, I think Chris is coming at six thirty, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. So if we go to just, um, any comments that are on the new, um, the changes that were made to the.
So we'll call your three different visits, three different just to call some talk.
Yeah, it sounds like compliance. Uh, the change that were added, um, just if you look at number one, uh, continue to study additional learning opportunities which challenge all students. Um, it just brought up as a suggestion that we offer as a baseline, just the number of courses that we offer for our students in regards to college credit, whether it's done here or online. So that was just a baseline part that we were added, I think it's a good thing to be able to bring it to the board and the community and say, hey, this is what we operate this time, and start to track that. Under number two, continue communication efforts, I, I think this was a good suggestion, um, look for ways to engage parents in school and community activities and partner with the community. I think we do a lot of that, but I think have that as a goal, I think is, is very appropriate, so that we can continue to look for ways to, um, to bring the community into us, yes.
I've got a question, I just wanna go back for a second. It says, see, the number of courses offered online and for, for college credits, because we have, um, don't we have a lot of classes that aren't college credits that are online?
I'll, I'll adjust that, so to just emphasize any college credit type or, or high achieving classes, where the kids get college credit, so I'll, I'll adjust that.
But I think that's fine, because it says and/or for college classes.
I was just checking, I, when I read it through, it's college classes, to make sure I didn't.
To me, I think it's fine, unless you wanna break it up, but it says and/or.
I'll take a look at it, see if we need to just make a clarification, we do want that, no doubt, um, so when somebody, the community members read this, we would like to be as clear as possible, so there are no guessing, so I'll, I'll take a look at that particular piece. But the board has no issues with that type of pieces per baseline, okay? Um, and then number two, um, look for ways to engage parents in school and community activities, partner with other community, uh, organizations, so engage families in school and community activities. It's a little redundant, I didn't know if I should break that apart, but the suggestion kinda came that way, so I left it at least for now. I thought I would wordsmith that piece and just combine it in one sentence, because I think the, the feeling for it is ways to engage and partner with the community is what we're looking for, in bringing people into, into our school district. So I, I do think as far as when we're looking at continued communication, I think that's a wonderful way to do it, and I think that was a great suggestion. Um, we'll have to look for some, uh, we talked about some baseline things, so if we go down, um, we added under the first bullet, number of type of class offerings. Birth to senior citizens, because we wanted to be all inclusive, so we added that. And then partner with Paintsville area center, and we can just put course numbers, I'll, I'll probably change that so that we can make more of a smart piece where there's a number there that's attached, or that we, so we can monitor how many times we're partnering with them. Number of members belonging to Paintsville Fitness Center, I think that's a great indication on how much we're partnering. Um, just came back from a, a committee meeting, and we, we talked about that, and does a great job, um, with our community, uh, community education piece and the fitness center. And the number of special programs offered to community members, I think there's a number of things, like when they show movies in the park, that are kinda special events, so I thought we should at least try and track those also. And then, uh, under the, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, six bullet, number of type of communications provided to stakeholders concerning District 71, I think we should also include the, the school board as part of that piece. So that kinda finishes off the first page. When we get to number three, um, really what we did was we made the changes there, I would highly recommend that we made wordsmith, but we'll leave those in place. They now are in line with the new, um, MMR ratings that they have. Uh, the old bullets were really based on no child left behind, now with the district having their waiver to those, uh, we just brought those, the verbiage into alignment with what really is happening. So all of the, um, pieces in A, we talked about the percentage of students proficient in reading and math will increase incrementally to meet the targeted percentages by the two thousand and seventeen as established by MDE and the, um, Paintsville School District under the no child left behind waiver in Minnesota. Um, we added data to D, um, for E, we added in reading, math, and science. Um, then F, we said increase our growth rate for students in the MCA math and reading based on multiple measurement rating, that's the MMR rating, the new, um, MMR rating for the state. We added G, which was close our achievement gap score in reading and math for identified groups, really ours is pre and reduced. So we wanna close the gap between a student who is, who is a pre and reduced student and somebody who is not. And that's where we, we see our biggest gap between students, so we need to make sure that we decrease that, and we're gonna look at decreasing it by fifty percent by two thousand and seventeen. Certainly, um, we're gonna aim for doing better, but that, these stood originally as our goal, and we'll start providing the board with information. Um, and then we add H, also provide staff development, I think, that's also a piece, if we wanna look at student achievement, all research would show that one of the biggest ways to get student achievement gain is to continue to improve our instruction in the classroom. So I thought if I added provide staff developments, um, to staff, uh, to help improve instruction, establish positive learning environment, and meet state and federal mandates, uh, because we do get, still get mandates from the state and the, and the feds, uh, and we need to provide some staff development when we get those types of things, so I thought that was also an appropriate piece to add. Uh, under baseline, number of types of academic supports for students, uh, we've talked a little bit about our high cheating students, but I think we shouldn't forget that we have students who struggle and do need additional support, so I think we can come up with a list or a number of supports that we're giving those students, so I think that should be a, a baseline piece of information also. Um, under number four, operating an efficient budget, maintaining a fund balance between six and eight percent. I would also like to see a piece of that goal in maintaining and updating our facilities. I think we are, do have issues that we're gonna have to look at, um, one way or another, so I think at least, um, a piece of our goal. And I know that, that does come into the dollar piece, so as I added C, maintain and update facilities, grounds, buildings, and athletic within budget constraints, because we still do have to live within our budget constraints. We do wanna get best paying for the buck, but I, I think that we have to continue to look at our facilities as we continue to look at our budget. And, um, just for baseline facility updates, I know there's a facility committee, so as that starts to go in again, I think the baseline data can be updated using that committee. And those are the major changes, otherwise there were not a lot of changes. I didn't want the board to have a chance, and the community to have a chance just to look at that, to digest a little bit, uh, probably at the next board meeting, we'll talk a little more series, and possibly approve them after I, I do a little wordsmithing.
Okay. All right, uh, moving on to personnel, we really consider approval of the seniority list for, for certified staff.
Um, this is a regular, regular process that we undergo, we do need to look at those in approval this time. The staff has had a chance to look at them, um, so they've been, they've been able to look at it, nobody's come to us with any concerns at this particular point. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody could find something that was missed, and if it's certainly appropriate, we have to come back to board and revise that for the group meeting, but it has been posted for, since, since September twenty fifth, so. Yes, twenty days.
No joke.
Um, no, we did have one question, and I answered that question with that particular staff representative.
Do them all at once, or one other time?
Um, I think last year you just approved one through, if I'm not sure. Thought that's the way it was on there. Well, I think they're listed separately, separately, so it may be.
Okay, so we have a motion right there, on the staff, and a second by Mark, any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Uh, number two, we do consider approval of the seniority list for the custodial staff. Motion above, second by Lou, any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Number three, we do consider approval of the seniority list for the maintenance staff. Motion by Dave. And second by Gretchen, any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Number four, we do consider approval of the seniority list for food service staff. Motion by Lou. Motion by Lou.
Second.
And second by Deb, any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. And number five, we do consider approval of date of hire documents for the paraprofessionals. And motion above, second by Mark, any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor signify with a say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Okay, we'll go on to our informational, informational reports, starting with Deb, and the staff development report.
Uh, our staff development is on October eleventh. Um, uh, we also had a formal, or an informational meeting here, so, um, I was a little bit late getting there. But, um, they have decided to redo how the agenda is set up, so that they take care of Phil's stuff grants and stuff at the beginning, which could prove to be interesting, because as, it, they always, there's, it seems to have to be more people that come in a little bit late to those meetings, I think. But I'm sure it'll work fine, get them out of the way ahead before they start with the business, they're trying to get the meetings more streamlined, they, um, and get out there more efficiently. Also, I got to, uh, do, they're doing everything online, we had minutes and agendas and everything, and instead of printed copy, when I walked in, they handed me, I don't know where it came from, someone handed me an I, uh, never had one before, it is. It's interesting, and it was fun to try it, but we also have, they also have it all online, so they can pull it up on a smartboard. Um, they discussed that there is no, it's just a carryover dollars and.
Yeah, I, I, at least at this point, there were some carryover dollars, at this point, I have kind of frozen those carryover dollars pending what will happen with the referendum. Um, I'm just a little concerned, and I would rather be proactive, there's probably enough dollars there that we could maybe say something, so at least at this particular point, I have asked that we just hold the carryover dollars until, unless absolutely necessary, and I have made a couple of exceptions to that, because they've chilled, they've already encumbered those dollars. So unless we need to use them, um, the, the piece I'm worried about is that we don't have a very big staff development budget in the first place. So I'm a little reluctant to hold things, uh, because there are a number of things that we do need to do. But, um, given the circumstances, I, I thought it was just prudent to wait and see what happens. So, but, um, I think eventually staff development is something we're gonna have to talk about, um, like I said, it is, uh, the best way to improve student achievement, is just help everybody become better at what they do.
And they did, um, discuss, like you said, some of the things that they have to do, MARS and stuff like that, some of the training they have to have went through, and they discussed, um, staff development goals. Um, they get a new membership, Ed Gardner, who's replacing Barb, and they were, he's already a parent on there. And, um, discussed mental health continuing Ed, um, and a tech grant that Lori had. And they did get the meeting over, everything taken care of, and out by four thirty, I think it was the goal, and they got it done, so it's good.
Okay.
And our next meeting's November eighth.
Okay, um, Matt is not here, or?
Uh, Matt is not here, because when I moved the, when we talked about moving the board meeting ahead because of the playoff team, um, he has, he's in a class right now and teaching. So he will fill us all in, um, at the next meeting.
See, Chris is coming in, should we finish up with three reports?
I think we can finish up the reports, and then.
Then we'll get right to you, in a couple of minutes, Chris, yeah. Okay, so Bob, what's that?
Um, just wanna remind the community members that there's a referendum vote on November sixth, uh, they go to the website to get additional information on that. Uh, right after the school board meeting, if there is anybody here that wants to ask questions, I'll, I will be around to answer any questions. It was one of the public meetings I set up, uh, November first, I also set up a meeting that night at seven o'clock here in the seminar room. I did talk with all of the nine through twelve grade students about the referendum. Um, I always find it interesting that it did come back to me that I had said a number of things in that meeting that I know I didn't say. Uh, example, I came back to me that, um, all of football was gonna get cut. Um, no, I never said all football was gonna get cut. Uh, so it's, it's always interesting that, um, it's, it's all about perceptions. At one time, I had mentioned that, uh, cutting six hundred thousand dollars is equivalent to about twelve teachers. So it started coming back that we were gonna cut twelve teachers. Um, we have six hundred thousand dollars we will need to cut approximately if the referendum is not approved. Uh, there'll be a lot of work to be done if that's the, the case, and we'll have to look at all of our areas, we'll make a determination on what to cut. Uh, if the referendum is passed, we will be able to keep the program that we presently have, but that's pretty much it. So I just wanted to clarify those things. Certainly, community members can call me if they have any questions, I would encourage them to. Uh, the one thing that I have really asked the community to do is to make an informed decision before they go vote. I think that's an important thing. The only way you can make an informed decision is by getting the information. So I would encourage you to do that before you go to the polling booth and, and gast your ballot. Um, we have playoff game tonight, that is why we moved the school board meeting ahead, so to give everybody as much an opportunity to get to playoff games as they can. Uh, we met with the administrative team, uh, we talked about the levy, um, we will need to update our lunch policy, there's some things that we're not doing now because of technology. Uh, we also have some things that we need to clean up on our wellness policy, that the state is mandating, that we have in that policy. So, and I think, um, this is a side note, I'm gonna look at all of our policies, and I'd like to come up with a calendar on how we're going to continue to update those policies. They tend to get forgotten, so if you don't continually update them, all of a sudden you wake up and you've got fifty policies that you've gotta update. Uh, that can be a lot of work, and, um, I'd, I'd rather spread them out as much as possible, and put them on a calendar so that we update certain policies. and put them on a calendar so that we update certain policies at certain times and on certain years. Talk about school board agenda like we always do, transportation, we have some discussions on that. In order to transport a student, you really do need to have their vehicle certified by the State Department of Transportation. And we have some issues that we're going to have to look at in order to clean up some things. So we did have a discussion about that. We had a reminder that to get PR good things in for Doghouse News, Proud House, PR type of things. Did send out just an email with some information on Minnesota School Board Conference. If you haven't seen it, it's just informational, if you're interested in going to that. I'm also going to talk to the school board about, because I don't know who has attended what trainings. They have Phase 1 through Phase, I think, 4 trainings for school board members. So I'm going to be asking them for a list of who has attended what and send out some reminders because those phase trainings will be coming out fairly quickly in December. So I'm going to be sending out a reminder to school board members on where they're at and encouraging school board members to attend those trainings as much as possible. Did go into equity meeting, the C meeting in St. Cloud, great meeting. Had some very good discussion about how we can equalize funding. For those that have attended one of my referendum presentations, we do talk about equity and the fact that the state does not equalize things the way they should. A district like Hopkins is able to generate a lot more dollars because they're a property wealthy district. Where if you don't have as much wealth in your district, it's not the same fair kind of funding. I'll do an article on that one of these days in the paper. And then just a reminder that the choir has a soup sandwich and song event this Friday, 5:15 to 7 o'clock. High school cafeteria and auditorium. I have heard nothing but great things about that event, so I've encouraged the community to get there. That's what I got.
Thank you. And we'll go on to the audit, now we've got Chris Jacobson here from Holland and Henning, who will share the results of the audit.
Okay, that is, most people have a copy of the log act office. All right. Guess we can kind of start off, you know, first from their table of contents. If you can find everything. Basically, start on page 2. And basically, this is our independent audit report. The main thing to take away from that page is that we presented on qualified opinion or findings, basically stating that there's nothing material that we will misrepresent. Going on to page 4, kind of highlights the, kind of in the middle of the page, there are the key financial highlights for the 2011-2012 fiscal year, include the following. Net assets decreased by $64,000 to $74,000. Overall revenues were $10,770,000. And total expenditures were $10,835,000. Overall general fund revenues were $9,635,000 compared to $9,766,000 of expenses. General fund balance decreased by $437,000. General fund, unassigned fund balance decreased by $617,000. And amount of bonded indebtedness paid off was $610,000. And of course, as you probably noticed, those were. And moving on to page 7. Just kind of explains the difference between the district-wide statements and the fund financial statements. Fund financial statements is basically just the historical method of calling the way it's been done. And later on, we'll kind of compare the difference between district-wide and the funds. And page 8. Basically, these are the district-wide financial statements. And kind of going through everything. Total assets as of June 30th, 2012, combined quarter. The total net assets were $5,185,955 compared to $5,250,209 in 2011. Kind of goes through, you know, changes in current and other assets, capital assets, you can review or detail on that. And basically, one other note about district-wide versus the fund. The fund gives us a better picture, like the short-term view of things compared to district-wide is more longer. And as far as, page 9. Is basically the change in net assets and last year compared.
District-wide?
And just overall revenues, 2012, $10,770,000 compared to $97,000. Compared to $11,045,858,2000, or that's 2011, first compared to 2012. And total expenses were $10,834,671 for 2012, compared to $11,136,117,2011. And moving to page 11. Basically, it's graph of the revenues and expenses. Pages 13 and 14. Basically shows revenue and expenditures for the governmental funds. And shows basically a fund balance decrease of $385,629. And on 14, this kind of shows the enrollment information based on the prior years. The one thing to note there, that the enrollment discount gets weighted so that a high schooler has more weight than, say, a kindergarten, as far as coming to the enrollment information. And then 16 and 17. Again, now this is district-wide, certain net assets. One thing you might note is the top line cash and investments is up right about in 2012 compared to 2011. And if you move down into the liability net asset section, there were $2,325,000 worth of certificate of indebtedness issued in 2012. So that's the main reason for the big jump there. And so if you look at the total liabilities as well, $10,610,589 compared to $9,302,711 in 2011. And page 17. Basically shows the different program revenues. And that is on the district-wide financial statements. And the statement of net assets. Basically, it's going to be providing more detail than what it was on page 8. Basically, the same information with more detail. And statement of activities, page 17 is similar to the information on page 9. Jumping forward to page 18. These are more of the historical financial statements. And page 18 has the general fund. And page 45 will show a comparative detail with more information from 2011 to 2012. Main things, cash and investments, total $998,371 with $2,325,000 outstanding in certificates of indebtedness that we covered. And compares to zero of cash and investments that actually was in a small negative balance last year. With, last year had no outstanding certificates of indebtedness either. And unreserved, undesignated fund balance of $177,409 at 6:30, 2012 versus $794,525 at 6:30, 2011. This was an unfavorable decrease of $617,116 from 2011 to 2012. The unreserved fund balance was $1,034,191 at 6:30, 10. And so there is that progression each year. In accordance with implementation of ASB 45, the commitment of fund balance in the amount of $205,691 has been made from the future liability for post-employment benefits other than pensions or other retirement severance, et cetera. The unfunded portion as per 7-109 actuarial valuation was $1,491,86. New valuation is required and will be done this year. General fund also included $89,611 of trust fund assets as unreserved funds. You may know that as the lever trusts. Restricted fund balance of $310,108 at 6:30, 12 was $253,359 at 6:30, 11. Reserve fund balance increase of $56,749. And the reserve fund balance details show as a footnote, 8 on page 35. $99,210 of the general fund balance is unspendable, representing prepaid expenses and inventory applicable to the next fiscal year. $27,438 is unused fuel oil. $12,870 is for Hercules. And $57,616 is per computers and other technology equipment. Total general fund balance is $792,418 compared to $1,229,730 last year. Overall, the general fund balance unfavorably decreased by $437,312. Fiscal year 2011 decrease was $140,76. The fiscal year 2010 decrease was $60,664. The last increase for the fiscal year ended 6:30, 09, when it showed an increase of $42,224. So again, showing that trend. General fund balance is 8.4% of general fund expenditures, which equals about a month of expenses. Last year, the general fund balance would cover 1.8 months of expenses. And the debt service fund basically reserves for accumulation of resources for payments on debt. Cash and investments total $665,457 with total assets of $1,120,877 and liabilities of $885,949. Leaves the fund balance at $234,928. And under the other major non, other non-major funds, consists of food and community service funds, combined fund balances $203,658 versus $203,754 last year. If you play more detail on these funds, you can find that on page 47. And then page 19. Is the reconciliation of government fund balance, balance sheet net assets. It comes from the difference between the district-wide net assets, fund pages 16 and 17 versus the fund balances, which you find on page 18. And district-wide states include all assets and liabilities to districts whose government funds are more ardent. And basically, it kind of goes through the reconciliation there. If you guys want me to touch on anything there. Good on page 20. Is the revenues and expenditures, general funds. Revenues were $9,969 versus $9,625,35 last year. It's a decrease of $624,66 or 6.48%. Expenditures were $9,438,281 versus $9,765,962 last year. It's a decrease of $327,681 or about 3.35%. Expenditures exceeded revenues by $437,312. And the district's total payroll for the year was $6229,910 versus $6,146,319 last year. It's a $83,591 increase or about 1.4%. The debt service fund revenues of $887,245, expenditures $835,466. Access revenues over expenditures of $51,779 to leave an any fund balance of $234,928. And again, the other non-major funds, food and community service fund, combined revenues at $887,633. Expenses at $87,729. Expenditures exceeded revenues by $96. Any fund balance of $203,658. And detail on the individual funds is on page 48. There was no activity in the building construction fund. And taxes and state revenues were $9,55761 compared to $10,999,937 last year. It's a $574,176 decrease of 5.68%. Local and county source revenues increased $5,188 to $734,863 over last fiscal year. Federal revenues decreased $234,558 to $515,223. Total revenues are down from last fiscal year, about a 6.94% decrease. Expenditures were $11,161,476. Expenditures were eleven million one hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-six compared to eleven million four hundred and forty thousand one hundred and fifty-nine last year. Two hundred and seventy-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollar decrease, or two point four four percent. And page twenty-one, just another reconciliation. Again, comes from the differences between the district-wide statement of revenues and expenses versus the statement of fund balance revenues and expenses. So you'll notice, basically, you know, towards the middle of the page, it shows principal repaid on the debt service. And basically reconciling to the statement of fund balances, so. And page twenty-two. Is showing the budgeted amounts between the original budget, the final budget, and what it ended up at with the variance listed in there. And revenues are under final budget by a hundred and twenty-three thousand three twenty-eight. Expenditures are under budget by fifty-one thousand twenty dollars resulting in an unfavorable general fund budget variance of seventy-two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. And so overall, it does end up being a very small fraction compared to the actual numbers you're working with. So, you know, close to ten million dollars. Expenditures, you know, seventy-two thousand isn't all that much. And then our footnote section starting basically pages twenty-three to forty-one. Just to touch on a few. A quick note on capital asset leg and capitalization threshold where we start testing expenses for capitalization set at four percent. And that doesn't exclude sports. And on page thirty-two. Basically shows the capital assets, the building improvement additions, equipment additions. And then the retirements are just, you know, either scrapped or disposed of assets, we just remove the depreciation from that. And then pages thirty-three to thirty-five shows the district's outstanding volumes and certificates are detailed in footnote six seven. Find it there. And then page thirty-five shows the reserve fund balance, footnote nine. And just I guess a little bit from that page, the general fund did have prepays of ninety-nine thousand two hundred and ten dollars as well as funds that are committed for separation purposes of two hundred and five thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars. And basically, our schedule of findings start on page fifty-six. Again, to touch on those, the results, we do express an unqualified opinion, which we touched on at the beginning. And significant deficiencies in internal control were disclosed by the audit of the financial statements of the independent school district number seven forty-one and are reported in the report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters based on on audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. The significant deficiencies are materially discussed. No instances of non-compliance material of the financial statements of the independent school district number forty-one, seven forty-one, games of Minnesota, were disclosed during the audit. And to touch on the internal control policy. It just says the potential exists, a material misstatement of the annual financial statements could occur and not be prevented or detected by the district's internal controls. And that's more just based on the staff that we require to have those controls, so, not very realistic. And then on fifty-eight, kind of the same thing. Lack of segregation of the accounting functions, again, just kind of a staffing issue. You know, you need several different departments and, you know, coordination checks and balances between now, which just really isn't useful. And then pages sixty to sixty-five, just touch on the student activity report. And moving on there, page sixty-five. Is the finding that, again, to verify that the student activity funds are going for the benefit of the student and not improving, you know, other capital areas in the school. So, you know, cards by either a computer or, you know, something that would stay housed or, you know, something like that would just be an example of that finding. And then last page. Basically is this fiscal compliance report that is required by the state of Minnesota. Lot of information, are there any questions? No, that was kind of a lot of numbers thrown out everywhere. Lot of information, so.